Seven o'clock on Thursday, March twenty-third, I will call this special meeting of the Sunapee School Board to order and take a roll call from my left to your right.
Brian Garland, School Board.
Paul Skarren, School Board.
Russ Holden, Superintendent.
Jesse Tyler, School Board.
Ed Anderson, School Board.
Okay, and even though it's not on the agenda, if we could all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, we'll have a moment of silence afterwards. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we'll just take a moment of silence. Second on our agenda is accept the resignation of a Sunapee School Board member. Heather Furlong has tendered her resignation, and I will entertain a motion to accept that resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
And motion's been made by Ed, second. Second. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No abstentions. Thank you. Moving forward on our agenda, we've got a large public here, and I know that you guys probably have a lot to say. In the back is our public participation at board meeting policy, for those of you that are familiar with it. I indulge me for half a second, for those that are not familiar with it. First part of the public forum is agenda only, and the second part of the public forum at the end of the meeting is agenda and any other topic that you care to discuss. Fifteen minutes, three minutes per person. If there are more people than three times five, then that's fifteen. If there are more people than five that wish to discuss, it's at the discretion of the Board to extend public comment. We would need a motion from one of the Board members, a second, and a vote, and then we would extend it for another fifteen minutes. So having said all that, I open the floor to whomever wants to take the microphone, three minutes. And before you do, I have a, I will be timing only because we have a lot of individuals that may want to get in. So I hand it over to you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Carrier, and I'm from Georgia Smiths. And because we're going to be looking at getting another School Board member, John will be on the way down here this evening, then maybe a good way to do that would be for the School Board members that we have now to interview those that are interested in becoming a School Board member and have created a rubric so that you have specific qualities that you know that you're looking for in a School Board member. And with the rubric, it's going to be equitable across the board because you'll be rating everybody that you interviewed with that same score. And I just think that would be the best way to do it.
Thank you. Any other information that would like to be tendered by the audience?
I'm Doc Bettencourt, Sunapee resident, former chairman of the Fledges Advisor Committee. I wrote this down so I wouldn't ramble, I can think I can do it in three minutes this way. So the second agenda item is to decide whether our system of government remains a government of the people or a government of the School Board. Because it would only take three School Board members to choose, it will only take, to choose the replacement, to fill the empty seats.
Actually, two of them stand.
I'd like to make the case for retaining our government of the people, or more specifically, the government of the voters. The voters braved a storm last week to vote for our choice of five school candidates, five board candidates to fill two seats. And the results were clear, three candidates received over two hundred votes. Two of them sit at the front of the room, congratulations to Ed and Jesse, and the third one sits in the audience tonight. John Augustine received two hundred thirty-one votes. Hundreds of voters wanted to see him up on the stage tonight. But the way the system works is he gets to sit in the audience. And I think I and the other two hundred thirty voters understand that's the system, and that's fine. But I'm concerned about the School Board that is considering flexing its legally, its legal muscles and suggesting that the right thing to do is to allow just three School Board members to overrule these two hundred thirty-one voters. And let's think this through. Who would they choose? One of the candidates who received fewer votes last week than the, than the third candidate? Or somebody who received exactly zero votes last week that didn't even bother to run and probably hasn't been to any of these meetings in years? I'm asking the School Board to do the right thing. There's only one option that doesn't mean ignoring some of these voters. Appoint John Augustine and his two hundred thirty-one votes to the vacant seat tonight. There's no reason to wait. It's the only option that respects our system of government by the voters, and it's the only option that will allow the Board to move forward without continuing out of controversy. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this topic? Or any other topic, that is?
Hello, I'm Jan Bettencourt, a Sunapee resident and past School Board member. The past two years have been challenging for me. Two years ago, the School Board was presented the same decision on how they were going to fill the two School Board seats, which are, which were vacated a couple of weeks after the election. Even though I lost by only twenty-six votes to Mr. Skarren, and previously vacancies had been filled with runner-up candidates in the election, the School Board chose to advertise for the interested folks to be interviewed to fill the two seats. What the three remaining Board members were saying was that they wanted to ignore the three hundred and thirty-six votes that Sunapee voters had voted, had voted for me, and choose an individual that they felt was like mine. Fortunately, there was a public outcry, and I was appointed for the one-year position. My hope is that this Board has learned from the past mistakes. Please do not enjoy and ignore John Augustine's two hundred and thirty-one votes. All citizens in Sunapee had the opportunity to run for School Board, and those that were interested ran. To me, these four candidates were strong proponents of the status quo. John was the only candidate who outlined specific ideas to improve student outcomes and to avoid missed opportunities. Is there anyone who believes that these are not important goals? Are the sitting School Board members afraid of the healthy dialogue that John would bring to the Board? I learned from my year on the School Board, if nothing else, our School Board would be wise to welcome more dialogue and a different perspective. Our School Board needs to get away from the belief that we must speak with one voice. You each ran as individuals. You each have only one vote. My hope is that you will think as individuals, be open to other opinions, even if you don't agree with them, and remember that you all are here to provide the best educational opportunity for all of our students. Please do the right thing and appoint John Augustine to the School Board. It will be, it will go a long way into helping many of us regain the trust of the Sunapee School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to speak to the agenda topics?
Jody Manson, Young Hill Road. Given the recent circumstances where we had two individuals who have called into question the integrity of our election process, I feel now more than ever before, it is important for you as the current Board members to prove to the voters that you value our election process. We are well aware that by state law, you are legally able to appoint someone to this elected position under these circumstances, but why would you? We had an election just nine days ago where the voters ventured out in a blizzard to cast their votes. If you decide to use the interview process to fill the seat, it would send a strong message that the two hundred and thirty-one voters who voted for John Augustine don't matter, and that your three votes as Board members are more important. And how can you justify that? The fact that you would entertain any other means of filling a seat, these people to believe that your agenda is more important than a fair process. We have had our share of a former chairman who ran the show on his own agenda with no concern for the public. Please don't follow that path, do the right thing, and support the voters of Sunapee.
Thank you. I'll wait till Jody sits down and call the next person, if there is one. Thank you.
Diane Robbins, I'm resident of Sunapee, been here since seventy-seven, but just long-term now, you know, just living here year-round since fifteen. So I know the school system's great, I know a lot of kids have graduated from here. What I care about is the process, and I guess I agree with what has been said here tonight, and that is that this has been a horrific time for Sunapee to go through this, because I, I've lived here and watched all the other things that have happened, but this is really causing to question, you know, transparency. I would hope that the Board would look and see that John Augustine did receive substantial votes in a, in a turnout that was really small. So I would hope that you would appoint John Augustine.
Thank you, Diane. Next.
John Brandini, Georgia Smiths. I sent a call of you Board members a letter in support of John Augustine, and I just want to echo what everybody else says. I think we just need to get this issue behind us, appoint John, and move on. I think to go to an interview process and give somebody the chance to be elected to, or be appointed to the Board without having filed to run, without having campaigned, without having shared all their views with the rest of the town, just doesn't make a lot of sense. I just think we need to appoint the next highest voter, which is John, and just move on and then conduct business as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'll let John sit before I call anyone else to the microphone.
My name is Kevin Clooney from Appleby Road. I know John, I like John, if you choose to appoint John, that's fine with me. I think there's a presumption here that are a little bit unfair. We have new Board members, we have new opportunity, and we should have a new discussion. Going back to the old, you know, I versus them, or whatever it might be, I don't think it's productive. If the School Board chooses to open it up, that's fine with me, interview the candidate you think is best, or appoint John, I have no problem. But I do have a problem with the presumption that the School Board somehow is not acting in the public interest. That has not been my experience in thirty-two years at Sunapee, and it's not my experience today. And whichever you choose is fine with me, I think John's a fine man. But I also think discretion belongs with whom the voters chose to represent, you chose to represent all the voters, not just a certain amount of voters. So whatever you do, I'm comfortable with, I just want you to know that I don't envy your position, and I think that you should do what's in your heart and in the best interest of the Sunapee School District.
Thank you, Kevin. Do I see any more movement towards the microphone, or are we, are we finished? Eleven minutes. Seeing no further interest in public comment, I'll close this portion of the public comment meeting and move on to the next item on our agenda, which would be Board Discussion on Appointment Process. And I will open it up to any of the three Board members to discuss first, or hearing nothing, I will continue to talk.
Can you just explain?
Go ahead, Ed.
Can you just explain to me why in the past it goes to where the School Board interviews versus why you don't look at the last candidate that the town voted for?
I can do my best to answer that, as I've been on the Board for five years. Brian, you've been on for nine years. We've had, in my term, three, three appointments to the Board. Sometimes when a resignation occurs, it happens six, eight, twelve, not twelve, but it could be up to eleven months after the election process, so that information may be not as fresh as, as folks believe it is now. To add to that, we have had multiple selection proceeds, meaning the prior seat that was open was open four months before an election, and the Board elected to not fill it and let the voters fill it, and that's what we're, the results are here. Before that, we had two seats that were available, and only two people ran in one election, so therefore there was one, one individual that I ran against, and that was Jan, so we had to advertise for a additional, an additional person for the, the extra seat that was there. And with, with Mike Ripley, did you have any more before that one?
That's how I actually, I joined the Board at the very beginning. I filled in after someone had resigned. I can't remember how far through the year it was, but it was a long time ago now.
So with, with Ripley who filled Ed Bailey's seat, and correct me if I'm wrong on, on my, my history here, we actually went to the second-most voter after, after May. And that's how that seat was filled. So we filled it with going after the second most, we filled it with having interviews, and we've not filled it. So what I'm hearing is that after this process occurs, we're going to have a clearer policy as to how to install a, a, a new Board member. Having said that, I'll read to you our policy. Actually, Brian, I'm gonna have you read it. I'm tired of talking.
I like listening to you.
Thank you.
Sunapee School District, BBE, is the policy number, unexpired term fulfillment. Vacancies on the School Board will be filled in accordance with provisions of RSA 197:26. Appointees will serve until next School District Annual Meeting.
Okay. So our policy follows state statute, and state statute is, do you want to read that, Russ?
The School Board shall fill vacancies occurring on the Board and other district offices except that of moderator and the next annual meeting of the district. In cases of vacancies of the entire membership of the Board or the remaining Board members are unable to agree upon an appointment, the selectmen upon application of one or more voters in the district shall fill the vacancy so existing until the next annual meeting. Sure, annual meeting of the district.
So those, the policy that we've adopted in the state statute is what we, the four of us are obligated to follow?
So may I ask question at this point?
Yes.
So is there no possible way to hold a special election?
I'm not an attorney, I'm a pretending chairman, emcee of this meeting. I don't see that the statute calls for allowing us to go out to spend the town's money to have a special election. It specifically states that the Board, the School Board, shall appoint. And if we can't appoint, if it's a two-two vote, or if it's a one-one-one, one vote with its four people, that potentially could be kicked to the Select Board to make the decision, as, as the RSA states. So with all of that said, here we are. You guys voted us in as your representatives, you guys are interested in, in asking us to do what you want to do, and you're here. And I thank you for all of the, and I'm assuming that you guys are also thanking, I can't speak on behalf of you, but thank you for all your emails, your phone calls. I did my best to try to respond to everybody's interest and, and explain as best as I could what, what is happening, and what the procedure will be or could be. And again, here we are, we're going to determine a procedure tonight, and I'm going to ask if, if any of our Board members have anything to, to add to what I'm talking about. So, may I? Yes, you may.
When I ran for election last year, are you turning the timer on me?
No, I actually shut the timer off, but there is a basketball game on tonight.
There were, I was voted in with six hundred and forty votes. So I'm, in my mind, that's six hundred and forty people that agreed with my position that strong schools make strong communities, that we support our schools, we support our teachers. I'd like to think I would be doing a disservice to those people unless we went through an interview process and tried to choose the best candidate available. Granted, the candidate may not have put their name on the ballot, because signing up for a three-year term on the School Board, I'm not sure that's exactly termed as fun. We may be able to entice talented people for a shorter period of time. By my calculations, probably seven meetings by the time we do interviews and swear in, they would have to attend seven meetings, knowing that we typically don't meet over the summer. So I would be in favor of looking at a pool of candidates that, at that point, you know, we can broaden the base of the Board. I can look at the six hundred and forty people that voted for me in the face and say that I've represented them the best I can. Well, that's, that's my position. I would say that we do a posting and an interview process, and we take it from there.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. I throw the hot potato to my right side, your left audience, to guys that are on the Board for the very first time, and if you've not sat up here looking at you guys, I actually encourage you to do so, you know, run for a seat. So Jesse, would you like to add anything to this?
I have a similar sentiment, I think that there's, you know, being the newest in, in town and newest to most of you, I think there's a lot of room for demonstrating openness and a willingness to commit to moving forward, and that can take a very active form by casting a wider net, seeing if people are interested, getting a chance to have discussion, have more people engaged, and then decide through that. So very similar sentiment. I think that if it's handled where there's more people engaged, then that's a positive for the community. It's no disrespect to voters for other candidates, but this is what the guidelines and statutes are. I ran because I felt like there should be more dialogue and more exchange, and this seems like an immediate opportunity for us to engage more of the community in that discussion about next steps forward, so that's my position.
Thank you, Jesse. Ed, would you like to add anything?
I think that it's very difficult in that with the amount of candidates running and the, the people that ran, and how close all of our votes are to not look at Mr. Augustine as a candidate for School Board. I think that's something we should take serious, because obviously those people did come out and vote. However, again, the highest votes are sitting out here, and the people that I've spoken to throughout the town and the community also have a vision that they want to see. And I think that I would like to sit down and talk to multiple people about that vision as opposed to just appointing.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sitting here as chair, I've been here, as I've said, for five years, have appointed, have appointed three people, have had a chair remain empty for four, four months. It's my belief that we have a voting process, and when I say this, I, words have consequences as do elections. So when I say this, it's, elections have consequences, we have first place, second place, and the third place. You folks have entrusted us to be your representatives. We're listening to you, but there are other people out there that, that have also spoken that are not here tonight. We talk about the number of votes, there are six hundred and sixty-two voters, of which John garnered two hundred and thirty-one. Jesse was three twenty-five, and, and Ed was two seventy-three, and April got a hundred and ten, and I forget what Veronica got, but we can all do the math together. No? I'm not gonna do the math together?
One thirty-four.
One thirty-four. Thank you. The election's over, and you have voted your representatives to represent, and we're going to do the best we can with that. I've heard from multiple parties lobbying one way or the other, and I've listened to all sides of the arguments. I've, as I said, I've tried to return all phone calls, all emails, anybody that's expressed interest with, with this, I treat with respect. So I appreciate you guys out there taking the time out of your night and doing this, but you have to trust us to do what we are charged to do by the entire community. So with that said, public comment will be af-
Point of, point of order, please?
Point of order from the audience?
I'd just like you to read that statute again. I don't think it says appoint anywhere in it, it says fill. And maybe I'm wrong, but I think the definitions are a little bit different.
The Board shall fill. Yeah, we've, we've read, we've read fill. Every time I've read it, it's been fill. But we are here filling the seat through electing that individual, but first we have to put forth-
Does it dictate the process you need to use?
Correct.
Correct.
And I think one of the primary reasons I called the special meeting was, first of all, to accept the resignation of the Board member that resigned, so that we could do that in a, in a quick amount of time as possible. And secondly, with that resignation, to have a dialogue, to have an open mic, to have whoever wanted to speak get up and speak, have us listen to you, in addition to all the emails, phone calls, and, and whatever else, other communications that have occurred. I believe that the Board here, I know I'm fully informed in, in what I want to see happen, and I think you've heard the Board members express their opinions also. So with that, do I have a motion from anybody to move forward with any kind of, of idea?
So I'd make a motion to post and invite for interviews.
What sort of timeframe? Do we have to qualify that? What should the goal be?
Well, we've got a partial motion on the floor. Would you like to add to that, that motion?
So I'd like to tidy up my motion.
Sorry.
So I, this, so my motion would be that we post as soon as possible for, for interested parties to schedule interviews in the next, by the next, the next meeting is on the fifth, so being respectful to everybody's schedules and making this possible for them, I would say within like a, a four-week window to be able to complete the interviews, so people can find time to meet with us. And then be able to come back to the following meeting with a decision.
A motion's been made by Jesse. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, and by Brian Garland. Now we're in discussion phase, so with, what that means is that we're going to discuss Jesse's motion. So Jesse, you've made a motion to put a four-week window in?
Post, to put a four-week window so that-
Which means that we would be after the April meeting?
Yeah, so it'd be the following, so, the May meeting.
Okay. Which means nobody couldn't necessarily be installed until possibly June.
The ideal would be by the April meeting, but also in the spirit of inclusion and people's busy lives, make, being able to schedule interviews to accommodate anybody that's interested. So if that's too generous and it's going to disrupt us moving forward as a group of five, as a, as a Board of Five, then the ideal would be by the next meeting.
How about we set a goal for April fifteenth? Is it possible to have another School Board meeting in the middle of the month? That would give us three weeks to post, interview, and appoint. And I'm, I'm just saying, let's have an intro meeting so we don't have to go to the fifth of May. I'm throwing it out there whether that makes sense.
Maybe have a full Board for, for the May.
Yeah, we'd have a full Board for the May meeting.
Ideally, have a full Board for the May meeting, and we can proceed from there.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I know travel schedules and work schedules, it may be tough, but-
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, I call for the special meeting, and knowing that the schedule is tight, I've, I've been pushing to make sure that we could have a new sitting Board member, at least by the next Board meeting. I don't know if I necessarily want to go out into May with a new Board member, or frankly, even scheduling an April fifteenth, that's, that's a death day for me.
Next day?
Yeah.
Sorry, it just happened to be the middle of the month.
That's, that's fine. So I- So I would-
Are you envisioning trying to do it before the April meeting?
We call the special meeting on Monday, and head count out here is 50, 55 people. I think that there's enough interest and desire to put down whatever it is that they think they're busy with and move forward with an interview process. Throw your hat into the ring, interview process prior to our next meeting, whether that's Monday, or even, we could even meet an hour or two-hour window before our 7 o'clock meeting, which means only one day is going to be taken out of your schedule for school board stuff.
That's fine. Could I just offer this? I believe you have at least three, if not four, media outlets in the room today, and if, once you set sort of your way to progress forward, I think that word will get out very quickly to the community, and so I think because there's so many outlets here, perhaps you could close that window down a little shorter and hit a big portion of the community, if not all the community.
So we've got a motion on the floor, made by Jesse, seconded by Brian. We're in discussion phase. I would entertain a modification or revision of that motion by the maker of the motion.
So I'd like to modify, amend my motion to pull the timeline in so that we'd be able to complete the process. So utilizing the media tonight and standard process tomorrow, make full awareness so that anybody interested can be engaged in the process. Have those interviews and meet one hour before the next meeting to be able to ensure a decision that we can communicate out during the board meeting. That gives a motion to, you know, for that vacancy to be full, and then we're a full board moving forward.
Jesse revised his motion. Brian, will you continue to second that motion?
I would.
Okay.
Can we fine-tune it some more? So one week for application? I'm just working through my own timeframe. So we're the 23rd tonight. Give them to Thursday, the 30th, for applications to be in to Mr. Holden, is that the process?
You probably could go as far as Monday, the 3rd, by probably noon time, and then depending on the amount of people that leaves you Tuesday, the 4th, and Wednesday, the 5th to conduct interviews.
Yeah, I just don't want to leave, if we can get it done sooner, so if we leave it a week to the 30th, then we could always meet on the 31st if we had to, or if people were available for interviews.
And these interviews, by the way, will all be held in the public.
So we'd have to post those as meetings for the-
Which is, I thought maybe it would be easier to have a posting for the meeting and have it all done in one day rather than multiple days, depending upon how many people.
So how about we do this? We give them a week, give them the 30th, and that, we can determine at that point whether we have to meet on the 31st or start the interview process sooner if we have multiple candidates. Is that, is that?
Yeah, can I, can I?
Please.
So I think if you went to Friday, the 31st?
Yep.
You still left yourself with three days.
Okay.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the following week.
Okay.
So original, revised, and then revised by you, I want to make sure that we understand what we're voting on if we do reach that point.
In order to post the Monday meeting?
I'll be fine 24 hours.
Okay. It's not 24 working hours?
As long as we can get things out by Friday, which again, if we do Friday, the 31st by noon time?
There you go. Okay. And that is, the application process would be to you, similar to the form people fill out to run for office?
So I think just to help, again, if I may?
You may. Just a letter of intent.
A lot of intent, your name, address, contact information, phone number, email address, and if you'd like, they could add a statement on why they'd be interested in serving on the board. It's a pleasure if you'd like to add that on, or just general information.
Okay. Well, Jesse, could you read back your?
All right. So the amended, amended, clarified motion is that we utilize the media and post so that interested parties can write a letter of interest and qualifications to be sent to Russ, with the window being closed at Friday, the 31st at noon, so that there is consideration for a 24-hour window to call a meeting for Monday if it is needed.
That motion's on the floor, that has been seconded by you. Any further discussion on what we've talked about? I'm going to call for a vote, all those in, excuse me?
Point of clarification?
Please.
If you had 10 candidates, you'd probably want to start Monday. If you have three, do you want to do those before the board meeting on Wednesday? Do you want to do those on Tuesday? I'm just trying to get an idea. So if there's no reason to get them having a meeting on Monday because you only have four candidates, do you rather push that meeting out and just go Wednesday before, or for sake of purpose go Tuesday to leave you some time Wednesday in case you want to meet again as a board to do deliberation before the full meeting?
I'd rather leave us some time to work through the process.
So pending on number of applicants either hold the meeting on Monday or Tuesday.
And you'll communicate that to us?
And I'll communicate that.
Noon on Friday, whether?
Yes.
Okay. So Jesse's motion seconded by Brian. We're all clear as to what we're voting on. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. We will post on our website and other electronic means, but I'll explain to you what it is we're looking for. We're looking for name, rank, no, just kidding. We're looking for your name, your phone number, your email, point of contacts, and basically a statement of interest, if you will. And then we will, I don't know how we want to, whether we do the order of interviewing the order of applied, so the first one applies, it's the first one that's interviewed, we'll work out those details later. Did I miss anything that you need in your office?
The only thing is, you asked for the statement of interest.
Statement of interest, yep.
Okay, just want to make sure when I post.
Having finished item number four on our agenda, I'm going to now open it up to you, the public, to address, this is a second form of the public comment section. It is a comment section, it's not a Q and A section, so we'll take your statements under advisement and do our best to answer your questions at a later point in time. So I open the microphone up to you. Three-minute limit, 15-minute total. Is there anybody that wishes to speak?
Jan Bettencourt, I do have a question for the board. How are you going to decide and when, you can decide on the qualifications that you're looking for, to make sure that you do get the best candidate? Will it be posted so that the candidates will know if they do meet your request for your qualification? Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Is there anyone else? John?
John Branleini, I just have a point of clarification. Are you filling the position the remaining two years of Heather's term or just one year?
I'll let you answer that, Russ.
By statute, you're only filling it for one, and then that person, if they like to, or anybody else would be-
For the remaining balance of the year. At the next school district meeting.
And then that person would have to, if they like to, run for the remaining year of that position.
I thought that that's what you read, I just wanted clarification of that, because you would think that-